November fourteenth, Nakadocha City Council. Chad, would you lead us in prayer, please?
I will. Join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you today grateful for all of your many blessings, Lord, particularly this great city of Nakadocha's, Lord. I thank you for our council, our mayor, Lord, our city manager and all of our city staff, all those that make those essential services. Get to us in the, in a timely fashion, Lord. I, I thank you for all, all of the things that you've blessed us with this time of year, Lord. Particularly with the just the, the many blessings of Thanksgiving and taking time to reflect on all you've given us, Lord. I ask that you be with us as we make decisions that would be honoring and glorifying to you, Father. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Just then for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, next item, we'll go into open forum. Roger is, and there is none in open forum. Okay, go right into the regular agenda. Item A, receive a report, hold discussion and give staff direction regarding the funding solutions. And possible public committee involvement for future capital utility projects.
Mayor Council, Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works. So it's good to be here. This is going to be kind of a long presentation tonight. But I wanted to have some discussions with you on utility projects. Let me see if I can get this rolling here. So specifically water and sewer infrastructure. So before we start, I love to have this disclaimer, you know? There's a lot of numbers in today's presentation. In fact, there's too many numbers and I apologize for that. So if you'll just kind of work with me, I'll walk you through them. And try to get you to the conclusion, but a lot of those are cost estimates. These things are constantly changing, interest rates, things that we've made some projections from. So please realize these numbers aren't nailed. They're just a way to give us some perspective.
Can I ask you one question for clarification?
Okay.
We're talking about possible revenue bonds.
Uh, but revenue bonds is one solution to funding, yes, sir.
Okay. Bu- but it's not necessarily having anything to do with a bond that we just got passed.
That is correct. And we'll, and we'll go through that. Yes, correct. So just remember what I'm showing tonight are some good estimates and things will get polished and changed as we go on. Or another way of saying it, just because I said so doesn't mean I mean it. So. So where are we in this process? So just to kind of remind you, back in twenty twenty-one, we bolted together some engineering firms to give us some priorities for our utility needs projects. And I was doing that before we started meeting so that I had a good handle on this. During twenty twenty-two, we developed this capital needs list. We started together with some public meetings, um, council meetings that were public meetings. Uh, and started to present all that. This is both for the general fund stuff and for the utility fund. Um, and we ho- you know, we held those public meetings, but we showed you nearly two hundred thousand dollars worth of needs, of which utilities were a subset of that. So moving on into twenty twenty-three, uh, we, we, you developed the capital needs advisory committee. Their first meeting, I guess, was technically in January of twenty twenty-three. You formed them in December twenty-two. Uh, we began a utility rate study process a little bit later in twenty-three, and that's underway right now, but that's part of what was in our sequence of events. Our CNAC group made recommendations for a general bond election that did not include utilities, and we'll expand on that. Uh, and then we, of course, had a successful general bond election a few days ago. What's, so what's next? In our future, uh, we'd like to talk to you about considering proceeding with the projects, of course, that are in the GO bonds. So we'll be bringing those to you as we select consultants and engineers and architects, and then ultimately into construction. Uh, we'd like to continue efforts to address the capital needs with utility infrastructure, which will be our focus tonight. And future consideration for funding, how we're going to fund those utilities to answer your question. That is one option we can look at, so. Um, have to write sideways on these timelines, so turn your head ninety degrees, but just to give you some idea time-wise. Uh, this is again, kind of just a timeline where we did our study for utility needs. We did, um, funding studies. And then ultimately, if we follow this process somewhere between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-seven, we might look at possible utility rate changes to fund things. If it's, if you decide that. Ultimately, in twenty twenty-seven, we would propose to you in a minute that we consider the possibility maybe even of a revenue bond. But I say that because this is three years away. So the proposition that we would look at would not necessarily be this year or next year. And then ultimately in twenty twenty-seven to say twenty thirty-five would be construction if we kind of moved through this process. So I just wanted you to understand whether this is all next month, next year, or the next decade. And so it really is over the next decade.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is the earliest that we can have construction in twenty twenty-seven?
So.
Is that correct?
So for, it depends on what we're constructing. So we're going to look in a minute at our utility needs. One of our largest needs that I'll show you is Lenana and Benita Creek sanitary sewer line replacements. And you have all heard a lot about them because I break them and I dump sewer in the creek. I'm famous for that. And so those are a high priority for us. They're a big, big, big multimillion dollar item. That has about a three-year design and acquisition process. So the earliest we could build that would probably be in the twenty twenty-seven era. However, we do have a whole host of, in some cases, already shovel-ready or almost shovel-ready sewer projects that I could literally start in a month to be under construction. Some of those we're going to stick in the ARPA pile to do, and you've funded a little over one point eight million for that. We have waterline projects that need to be designed, but in six months I could be under construction on those. So the answer is from the day after tomorrow to even far away is three years. And that was a roundabout answer to your question.
It wasn't, it was a great answer. Thank you.
But there was that's, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to ask one follow-up question.
Okay.
As we keep repairing both Lenana and Benita Creek lines.
Right.
Well, i- i- is that something that then is going to have to be replaced, or is that going to be, do we?
Do we get to recoup that?
Yeah, thank you.
We, we, we will not. I will think you'll see the plans in all cases will be to run a new and parallel, and in most cases larger line for future capacity. So anything we spend on it now, in my opinion, will not be recovered. It will be a Band-Aid that we lose.
No way we can.
No, and there's just no way. So it's, uh, so we're going to cross our fingers that I don't have any Band-Aids for a while.
The ones that you stated that was shovel-ready, what tier level are they?
Tier, tier one.
Tier one?
Yes, sir. I have some tier one sanitary sewer projects that are, you know, short of a little touch up on the plans, uh, are ready to go. A few that are right behind that, they need a few easements acquired, which may take us a few months, but they're ready to build as well.
But not funded.
But, but they are not funded necessarily. Now, some of those comma will be under our, are the ARPA monies, which we'll, we'll show you. So about one point eight million of those sewer projects I can move forward and do, but we have a lot more than that, about twenty-six or seven, I think. I'll show you here in a minute.
Thank you.
So this is a summary, and I'm going to.
I think, Mr. Beverley.
Oh.
Let's see. Okay, I got the button. Just from the outside perspective coming in, I have been at, at three different cities where you're dealing with replacement and repair. So part of it is your continuity of your service. You've got your existing lines, and then you're building your, your lines and capacity for the future. So what Steve is actually, and this is again, coming in cold, outside, having been there before. It's not atypical at all because you've got to maintain your service. And then, then you've got to build for the future, and you usually can't do the, you can't do both at the same time. It's kind of like fixing the old car and then building the new car at the same time. They can't be the same animal. So.
Correct.
Thank you. I was just hoping, you know, maybe.
It's, the utility world is, is tough, and some of the answers are, are just, they're just kind of what they are.
One, one thought process while we're still on this is that in the Lenana, Benita Creek sewer, there are trunk, there are mains that go through town and deliver to the sewer plant ultimately. Is we want those to be hundred-year lines. In other words, hundred-year life lines. So the projection for future growth, uh, is really, really important. So part of what we want to do is if we're going to touch them and spend a lot of money on them, we want it to be big enough to have at least a projected life. And we want the pipe materials we use to last, uh, literally last a hundred years. So we're really looking at a long-term version uh, of, of what we're going to do in piping, uh, for that, I hope. So. This is a summary, and we'll flip through a little faster in a minute, but I want to just give you the real quick impact, and I've rounded these off. But as we look at our, kind of our tier one, Mr. Bolden, needs, in water distribution, I've got just under sixty million uh, of lines that we've identified as our high priority, and this includes some work at our water treatment facilities. I'm combining those. Uh, then in sewer collection and sewer treatment, about fifty-seven million. All that to tell you is that I've got unfunded needs of about a hundred and seventeen million in water that to me are priority things to consider. Not that we can necessarily do all that, but I need to lay it on the table so we can evaluate what we can do and how we can do it. Oops. So you hit it twice, it goes twice. So this is a breakdown of the same thing, so I won't belabor it, but this is twenty-three different waterline projects. One, I'm spurting water there as you can see. And, and I do want you to know that these projects and scope were developed down to the engineering probable cost detail. We counted manholes, we counted gate valves, we measured lines, we got preliminary drawings. Did probable opinions of cost, and we looked at multiple creative solutions when we did the pricing. So some of these are cast in place, pipe repairs, some of these are pipe bursting, some of these are open cut. So we looked at all the technologies that are currently available to us to do two things. One is to do them quickly with the least impact to a neighborhood, because sometimes that's more important than a saving a dollar. And then the other is to do them economically and for the least possible cost. So we evaluated project by project of those twenty-three when we priced them and what the most economical technology solution would be. So I wanted you to know that we didn't just pull these out of the air. Um, get on, is that it? There it goes. Same thing with, with this. Michael, I've just got a lag in this, I guess. Is that, there we go. Uh, same thing with sewer. So there's twenty-six, um, sewer line projects. Again, Mr. Bolden, that's where some of those are already designed. Some of them are in progress and close to design. Uh, there's your Banana Creek, as we call it, the Benita and Lenana Creek, uh, projects. And the phases on that. About twenty-eight million, twenty-nine million is what I think we need based on our current estimates. We have funded five million of that in cash, which I'll talk to you a little more about. So really, the full drive out on that will be twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five million in that range. But again, there's our unfunded need. About five point two million at the sewer treatment plant, and that's something that seems to grow every day these days. This thing, big things break, as y'all know them. Only thing at the sewer plant that breaks are big things. So. As we go through this, and I'll go back to this at the end of the presentation, but I wanted you to know what I'm here for and what I'm looking for you uh, to help me with tonight, is to consider, do we want to move forward with the design phase of Lenana and Benita Creek sewer replacement projects? Well, you have already approved five million dollars for this purpose. It's already in the budget. But I'm asking you because I don't want to move forward with that large of an endeavor if we don't know that we're ultimately going to be able to go build it, because I'm not sure that's a wise funding. So, uh, if you are inclined to still believe that we're going to move forward in some form and build that, and it's going to be difficult to do that with cash, is the point of the story, you'll have, probably have some funding discussion for this project in particular. Then we would like to begin that. And so that's a question for you tonight to try to give us some guidance on. Again, you have approved those funds. I'm just looking for a head nod to move forward.
When was the five million approved?
So it's been in over two years ago, I think.
So not while I've been on the council?
No, sir. No, sir.
And it's been set aside?
It's been set aside, correct. It's set aside and is sitting there. And it's part of our CIP, Mr. Mall. So it's, it was in the CIP to move forward, and we didn't, you know, didn't start the project, so we carried it to the next year and didn't start the project. We're kind of rolling that money. So it's now accrued, five million is what we've kind of accrued there, just right under five.
When it was, I'm sorry, when it was approved, why didn't they just go ahead with the plans?
Well, because at that time, we were going to originally start construction, and what we realized is two things. Uh, one is we had a whole lot of other projects to go with our engineers, so we were kind of backlog, and we didn't try to issue proposals for that. Uh, number one, and number two reason was because we weren't sure at that point how we would fund it once we designed it. So we just delayed it, uh, seriously, until we could look at possibly some future funding scenarios like tonight. So. It was in the CIP, and re- realize when we say it's in the CIP, these are things that are in above your, your reserve. So anything that's excess funds in reserve is how, is where we get CIP from. So it wasn't in the normal budget, it was just sitting in the CIP. So you can touch it and move it to another project. So it was just kind of, we earmarked it, is the best way to say that. We earmarked it. So it really isn't in the prime budget that you approve. It's in the CIP excess reserves. So. So then do we want to begin?
Oh, I'm sorry. Question on the five million dollars?
Yes, sir.
That is just for design, correct?
So it's just designated for this project.
Yeah.
So it can be used for design. Obviously, design and surveying comes first. So I'm saying, yes, we, we want to use it that way. But just assume with me for a minute that design and construction and surveying and environmental added up to three point five million. We'd have a million and a half available that could literally be used for construction. So it's not earmarked only for design.
I, I mean, I guess my question was, we don't know how much it would cost for construction at this stage, right?
Well, we've had some, we, we have a, we have two preliminary engineering reports with very, very, very good detail and very, uh, high level of cost estimating on it. And, you know, as we speak, the price of manholes are going up. So we've applied some growth to that, and hopefully we still have a conservative number. So yes, I was going to say, we, we have a pretty good handle on it. Uh, not a, not a thirty thousand foot estimate. We have the five thousand foot high estimate. So, yes, sir. So we, we want to, okay, yes, ma'am. Oh, I was going to say, we want to, do we want to begin the process of, uh, utility, uh, infrastructure funding, uh, discussions on how to do that? Because it's more, it can be more than just revenue bonds. So there are options out there. And do we want to begin those discussions now, or do you want to have those discussions later? So. Because if you want to have them now, we'll start heading down that road with you, financial advisors and looking at alternatives. And it's not a one-meeting discussion, uh, and it may not be a one-committee discussion, which is the last question on here. Do you want to use a citizen advisory committee like CNAC for this phase of the process? And if so, we'd like you to give us guidelines on how, when, and who needs to be on it, and how you want to structure it. It's not our committee, it's your committee, and so we're just asking if you want to use that process, we're here to help you start that. Because we'd like to start the process, so if the committee's going to be involved, this is the time to answer that question. Oh, you're not through? No, go ahead. I was going to answer your questions. Oh, were you? Yeah. Go ahead.
Let me ask a follow-up question. Um, um, I have, uh, and I got this question, uh, last night when I went home after we had already talked. So this is.
Sure.
Um, why did we not look into this first before the, um, general obligation bond? Why didn't we look into, why didn't we take this piece first? You know, the water and sewer?
Sure. I think the decision to move forward with all the capital needs, when we, when that happened, back in, starting in late twenty-one and early twenty-two. What we realized is the critical path for the general fund was on a very short fuse. So we, we moved over to do the general fund first because we had, as you guys know, by July, you had to hear the presentation. And by August, you had to set an election. So we did general fund first because it had a drop-dead date. The utility fund things that we're going to look at tonight, you don't have to hit normal election dates. You don't have to have an election at all. So it had a very flexible schedule is the reason. So.
Even when it was proposed as COs, I mean.
Right.
Why was that, why did that one come before these? Because these are such serious needs. That's really. And, and I had understood we had to wait for the water rate study, but maybe that's.
No, so, so you're correct.
Asking that back then.
That's the second part of the equation, so thank you, is the water rate study, because your question to me is going to be, Steve, that's great. You want to finance fifty million somehow. What's the impact of that? What's the debt service to that? And how do we, how do we serve that? And we, I don't know that I could tell you what the rate increases have to be because it's complicated.
Back to my first question, why didn't we tackle that, you know, even before the COs and the, because this one's really a tough one?
Sure. Um, I don't know that I have a good answer for you, uh, other than administratively and collectively, this wasn't a thing until twenty-one, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. So when, when I got involved in it, councilwoman, then, you know, we had to kind of prioritize where we're heading. So why didn't this happen before? Well, I will say, too, probably remember, we were, we were in the process, starting in late twenty-one and twenty-two, of paying off bonds. See, you knew I was going to do it tonight. They warned me. Uh, to paying off bonds. So we also knew that we were hitting some, some new periods, and that was the initial drive on the COs, right? When we were going to lose some of our current debt service for that, that could we replace it, um, with the COs, other discussion. But I think that was, played a role in that as well.
Thank you. That helps.
This is where we are now, though. This is where we are now. So I won't read this to you because it'd be really engineer-like to read it to you.
Oh, I'd like to hear you read every line.
So these are projects that are either under construction, under design, under preliminary engineering, and a few of them that we hadn't started yet. But they are funded one way or the other through, through our CIP and through various budgets. I just wanted you to see that I've got about twelve million in sewer things to go do, and we are working on that. And some of them, we're fixing to be working on that, and you'll be seeing over the next few months, um, you will be seeing our staff bring to you various engineering contracts. And, uh, you'll get, you'll get really excited about some of that. And so the same thing for water, I've got just under eleven million in water uh, that's in there. About half of that is the AMR water replacement that we stopped the process of. And so we're going to work, we've, obviously, you know, we've changed staff and changed approaches. So, uh, I've asked our current staff to kind of reformat a maybe phased approach to doing this, uh, that we can re-present to, to you after we're kind of comfortable with it from an engineering side. So half of that water is, is the, is the meter replacement program. And that may not be done as a lump sum, obviously. So. So kind of follow me with this. This is, this is a little difficult. And y'all, when I put this together, I did this for the CNAC committee, so I'm dating it just a little bit. But it was before the end of the fiscal year when we did it. So if you'll be patient with that part of this. So it's kind of interesting to see that we had at that point in time thirty-eight million in reserves. Uh, and this is in utility fund balance now, not general fund, in utility fund. And be- between, at that time, May and September, when I gave this in May, we were going to transfer another two point one million. Remember, every month we transfer over monies to the reserve fund for this purpose. We had already allocated over twenty-five million to some of those existing CIP projects we just talked about. And so that left about fifteen million of reserves that were available for the twenty-three, twenty-four year at the time. Now, understand that does CIP projects and it does capital equipment. So we're buying a new bulldozer that's included in this, buying vehicles that's included in it. We requested from you about seven million in the twenty-three, twenty-four CIP. Um, and another six hundred thousand in capital equipment. That left, the whole net, I told you a lot of numbers, but look at the net is about seven point six million that was available for additional projects. So my utility fund balance of thirty-eight million really has seven point six million available to go look at doing with projects. The rest is committed in some form or fashion. As you know, we went through our ARPA funds, eight point one-ish million that we got, and you were gracious enough to put some of that to water and sewer. We did make some revisions to that with you, and this is currently where we stand, one point five million to go to water, one point eight seven one million to go to sewer. Uh, and so that will be part of ca- that's cash in the bank that we have, that we're literally, um, working on now. We're working on Storm Brain Project right now with ARPA, as you know, on, on, on Park Street, which I'm very popular for, by the way.
Especially in my neighborhood.
That's your neighbor. Your neighbors are happy with, really happy with me.
Wake up to it.
So we have about twenty-two point eight million dollars that total allocated through those funds. But if you look at how it all nets out with ARPA included, there's about eleven million there available for new utility projects. So that, that's good news. What I'm telling you is I have some cash, I have a long list of projects, and I have some available cash. Though, those are good things that we can start moving forward, uh, with things without any discussion on funding. So I want to talk about four funding scenarios. This isn't what we're going to do. I want to give you some perspective from one end of funding all the way to the other, which means there's alternatives in between and other. But I, but it hel- it's going to help you think, I think, through some ideas of maybe how we could approach it. Not the idea to approach it, but some ideas of how. So let's look at these. Uh, so first, remember, infrastructure is funded. Well, the general fund stuff we just completed is strictly property tax, sales tax, and fines and fees. And that does everything we just did on the bond, from buildings to airports to streets and drains. And I know you know, but so that the folks watching us, remember. This is funded from property taxes. But how is our utility stuff, utility infrastructure funded? It is funded only from your water and sewer bill, and that's a really important designation. So one of the questions, uh, that was asked to me this morning is, why did you pull the utilities out of this bond issue, Steve? Well, we didn't. The utilities weren't in that bond issue. They're in a different pile to go, and I know you know that. But it's very important that the public begin to learn this. So this funds water and sewer lines, it funds our treatment plant. And, and honestly, some equipment that we might use in, in that process. So. So infrastructure, Mayor, as you asked, can be funded with, uh, different forms of bonds with COs, which we've all had discussions about. They can be doing tax anticipation notes and really, uh, utility system revenue bonds, which was the other, other item that you mentioned. So. Okay, so this was kind of interesting, and finance helped me put this together at the time. So, and I was kind of surprised at these numbers, as you will be, but our utility fund reserves were twenty million. We had about twelve million of operational expense that came from that. So remember, operations come out of the water bill money. We had about three point seven million still going to debt service. We have depreciation account, which is our sinking fund, so we can buy new trucks and equipment with it, uh, about three point seven million annually. And then CIP projects that we tried to at least get a million out of for CIP. And you can see when we did that with a million, we were, ended up with a negative six hundred and ninety thousand. And what that means is that a million-dollar CIP can't be funded off our utility revenues. So let me simplify that. We don't have enough revenues in water and sewer to fund any CIP. And you say, wait a minute, Steve, you just showed me that you had excess monies. How did that happen? How that happens is if the utility fund revenues go above this number, and when does that happen? For example, in a dry year, when we sell a lot more water. So all of a sudden, we'll have a couple million more than we expected in revenue. So these projections are always conservative. You know, finance does conservative projections and good for them. But we can make some millions extra if we sell more water, sell more sewer. But that's the only way we're funding it. Because right now, what we're charging for water and sewer on the normal day breaks us even, is the point. There we go. These are some assumptions as we talk here in a second. So, um, our five-year average sewer revenue, this is revenue, total revenue, is just under nine million. Our five-year average water is ten million. I thought it was interesting, the average residential bill is eighty-four dollars and eleven cents. Now, that's all in, that's garbage, and the famous five-dollar fee. Uh, and so the average residential cost for just the water and sewer out of that bill is forty-seven dollars a month. And, uh, when we looked at some of the debt service potential, you know, had to serve debt, we made the assumptions, uh, four point five percent in twenty-five years. That can all change, but I wanted you to know that was my foundation when I look at debt service numbers here in a second. So here's a gamut of funding scenarios, and, and we'll move quickly through this. But option one is basically a no change. So I'm going to go out and take what I've got cash and the ARPA monies and what we've got budgeted, and I'm going to go fix some stuff. And I'm going to run out of money because we're going to get back to where the revenue is not building up in excess. So I'm going to burn the cash we have, do some water, do some sewer fixes. And then we're going to be back to a point where we're struggling to get even a million a year towards those projects. In twenty twenty-six and beyond, um, we could fund some projects from water and sewer revenue. We will be lucky if we can get a million annually to do that. And I'm just saying, depends on our revenue stream again. That's without doing any rate changes. So the pros and cons of this kind of no-change, do-nothing scenario is we've got thirty-five million worth of stuff to go do right now. But I'm going to expend it pretty quick, and there's really no impacts to the rate payer. So that's, that's a good thing. But the cons is it's minimal funding that remains for our other tier one needs. You know, that list of water and sewer lines I showed you? We're not going to be able to chop away at those very quickly, if quickly at all. And Lenana and Benita Creek may get designed with the five million, but there's no funding to build it. So, um, that's the downside to this kind of a do-nothing scenario. Option two would involve some form of rate increase. This is water sewer rate increases. Um, so here would be an idea is twenty-three through twenty-six, we fund projects with cash balance, like we've shown you, in ARPA monies. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, and again, this is just a thought to show you perspective, okay? Not necessarily a proposal. In twenty twenty-four, if you started increasing water and sewer rates by five percent annually for five years, and there are some cities that have annual growth increases to their water and sewer rates, we, we don't do that. We go long ways, and then we evaluate them, and we change them. But if you had an annual five percent increase, then we would get the thirty-five million dollars worth of cash projects done. By twenty twenty-eight, because we're increasing five percent a year, we would have about two point eight million excess dollars available for water a year. And we would have about two point four or five million available for sewer by just doing that rate increase. So this is still a pay-as-you-go scenario. It's just a five percent annual rate increase starts to generate these, these funds that are, right now, where we're at breakeven. This gets us above breakeven. So. So what's the cons for this? Well, the average total residential bill by twenty twenty-eight now, by this five years, will go up by sixteen percent by twenty twenty-eight. Lenana and Benita Creek sewer still get designed, but no funding because we're not financing Lenana and Benita. So we're, now we're chopping away at some of these water and sewer projects, but Lenana and Benita still remain, still remain, um, not built. Option three would be, let's look at financing Lenana and Benita Creek sewer. Um, and so we could go in and do our thirty-five million dollars worth of stuff. We could, it, just with ARPA money and the cash, so every, and every scenario has that, obviously. We're going to go do the. We could, it, just with ARPA money and the cash, so every, and every scenario has that, obviously, we're gonna go do the, the cash thing. But in twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven, uh, and I started in twenty-six, um, even though I talked about twenty-seven, because it takes a while to get these done and sold. So I think twenty-seven would be the money received and twenty-six would be the initiation. And that's, so that's why those dates are a little different and I apologize for that. But in twenty twenty-six, let's just say we sold thirty million in revenue bonds for Lanana and Benita, that gives a little inflation rate. Um, we could raise average sewer rates by twenty-three percent to serve the bond debt. That gives us again, thirty-five million of good projects, it'll go up to three years with no rate increase. And then we would have a rate increase to serve that debt. And we would also get our largest sewer project, the Lanana Benita funded. So the total averaged, uh, excuse me, total average residential bill, uh, would increase by about seven percent for that option. And that, and you know, I'm making estimates, Mayor, I warned you in the beginning, because I don't have the rate model to help me polish this. So we're looking at what's the overall cost and how much would the overall income need to go up? And so broadly, our rates would have to go up seven percent. That might mean that some high-end users go up eight, nine, ten percent, some low-end users go up three. Where I'm not here to be able to tell you that without modeling. But in general, our overall revenue would have to go up by seven when I say the rates go up. And this would be, uh, still allow minimal annual funding for other utilities. So we just put all of our eggs in the Lanana Benita Creek basket and, and not much in attacking all the other list of projects. Option four, and this is my last one, just again, I'm trying to take you all the way across the gamut. Is financing, again, Lanana and Benita Creek and also doing an escalating rate increase to fund those other projects I've shown you, water and sewer. So, um, by twenty twenty-six, we sell bonds, twenty twenty-seven, we get the money, twenty twenty-four, we began increasing utility rates five percent annually. For a period of ten years, I just made that up as a scenario for you. Then we get the cash done, by twenty twenty-seven, our sewer revenue equals our debt service, which is good. After ten years, we would have six point five million a year excess, if you will, water rates. And we would have five point six million excess in sewer revenue. And all that could go towards attacking our utility infrastructure projects. Now, that doesn't mean you don't do anything in your nine and your eight, I just wanted you to see at the end of a ten-year escalation, how much extra revenue is sitting there available for capital project work. So in the very first page, I warned you about the rates and, and the estimates. And one of the things I, I noted in there was that there will have to be water and sewer rate increases, just because the cost of chlorine went up four times. So there will be other issues on water and sewer. So I, you know, I don't really look at that in this and I want you to know that. So when I tell you it increases thirty-three percent, the likelihood is it's gonna be thirty-five or thirty-six percent, because we will probably raise rates. You will probably look at raising rates for other operational costs in, on top of this, so. Average total residential bill would increase by thirty-three percent by twenty thirty-four. In other words, over the next ten years, it would go up thirty-three percent, whether you think that's good or bad. But just wanted you to have some range of impact, some range of impact. Just to remind you, and I did this, my, um, our, our CNAC committee, um, ma- made a really interesting comment. They said, you know, when you get your water bill in the mail, everybody calls it the water bill, the water bill in the mail. Part of that is the five dollar fee. And so when we think about what's the impact to rate payers, we have to remember that five dollars is still there. There was some discussion in the capital needs committee about concerns for funding future drainage stuff. So we've got ARPA money to go to drainage, we've got bond money now to go to drainage, that's all good. But we do not have an annual revenue stream to pay for drainage work. So we're gonna make a big pop, but we're still gonna have ongoing maintenance and drainage, that we haven't solved how to budget through that in, in a CIP. So one option they talked about, and that's why I brought this up to them, was that we could have another fee like the street maintenance fee, which, you know, could get you, me run out of town. But it was a discussion about, do we want to have another fee that, that does that? So I wanted them to know that that adds on to all these numbers, say the rates go up thirty-three percent plus a fee, if you're thinking. It's all just part of the package that a consumer, a residential or business consumer sees. So it wasn't to say that's a good thing, it just, I want you to remember that that can also be an impact in what, what our citizens see when we look at this, so. So again, this is what I asked you when I started, do we want to move forward with the design phase of the Lanana, Lanana and Benita project? Uh, do we want to begin the process of studying all this infrastructure funding? And then, uh, do you want to look at doing a committee? And so we would, we would request your direction now or in a near-future council meeting, uh, to kind of let us know how you want us to start proceeding. Cause right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern, waiting, waiting to move forward, so happy to answer any questions.
Okay, go ahead.
One of the questions that I've been thinking of is we're going through, looking at the, the funding scenarios. As well as what our, what our current outlay is. I see that we have, see if I can get to the right slide. What is our current debt service, um, what's the term on that debt? When will it, it's three point seven four million is, and that's an annual cost, right?
It is.
When does that mature?
I, I don't have an answer to that and I apologize.
Uh, it just seems like as we're considering it, that needs to be part of the, part of the picture too.
No, he left, okay, I didn't know, so I think it's relative.
He's in the corner asleep.
So sorry, I would normally hit finance folks to help me answer that. I don't believe it's a long-term circumstance, we've paid us almost all of our, um, Texas Water Development Board, uh, bonds, if you will. And so, um, and I will have to get you an answer to exactly what the term on that left is, I apologize.
But I'm, I'm just saying, that's good news if those are about to mature. Because we will open up so- at least some semblance of revenue when they do mature.
Correct.
Which will ease this burden to some extent, even if we do have to increase rates, we'll have, it won't just be that six ninety, six hundred ninety thousand at the end.
Correct, and, and remember, um, and we had this discussion, starting with even the COs. So if we retire debt service and we begin to have excess revenues, if we don't have a bona fide plan for those. That, that we're gonna serve debt and buy things with, you and I can't just charge too much for water and sewer and make a profit. So we would literally have to lower rates if we don't have a true planned direction from council. On, we're fixing to take on and spend that money on projects, so. Uh, so you're right, it would be there, but we would have to dedicate it to doing that.
And, and Steve, the, uh, the rate study would help flesh out those, those timelines together, where it would come together. So old cities, having dealt with that before, they're rebuilding with those utility funds. New cities are building new capacity because of their growth with the utility funds. So it's, and then obviously, when you're past the high growth and you're replacing these things, you're dealing with old debt, plus new debt. Plus you're, I mean, bottom line, it ends up becoming public safety in some places and, and so it, it, you know, fire flow rates and all kinds of things. So the rate study is gonna be critical to know, so the community, and that's where I think the committee would come in as well. They need to look at that and say, what is palatable for the community based on the, the infrastructure needs, bottom line.
I, I think and I'm guessing what we're gonna find out is that, and you saw that in our little break even scenario. Is that we probably don't collect enough to cover ourselves a lot of times on water and sewer, especially in a, a, a lower density residential setting. Where there's a lot of water line, a lot of street, a lot of infrastructure to serve houses that are far apart. What you'll find is the cost of service for those houses is less than what they're paying in their water bill. And so this is not a, this is not a promotion for high density, but it just tells you the closer they are, the more cost-effective that is. And so, so realize, I think our rate study is gonna help us kind of flush some of that out, where you can see exactly if we're paying our way. I tell a lot of folks who complain to me about their current water rate, is you're probably not totally paying your way.
So the other question that I had was related to the Lanana and Benita sewer lines. We've got five million set aside, what is your preliminary back-of-the-napkin number for how much the design phase of that would cost?
So we would normally budget, uh, for all of the consultants, not just engineering, about twenty percent. About twenty percent of that number. Uh, we're hoping it's such a big, there's some economy of scale when you're doing engineering projects like that, so we're hoping to come in under that. I, my hopes are that the five million will pay for engineering, surveying, environmental, um, right-of-way acquisition surveying, which is a different surveying. Uh, and, um, a person that will help us get easements and even be able to buy some of those easements. But I'm not sure we'll get all the way to the end of acquisition with that, so. So I think the five million will probably mostly go to soft cost, including easement purchases. But yeah, it'll be several million just, just for design. And this is, um, and, and Rick and I have talked a little bit and I'm gonna try to produce a little memorandum to y'all. And be happy to stand up and talk about it, but I wanted to acclimate you, especially, um, folks who are newer on council, who haven't been through a lot of engineering. So we bring engineering contracts to you for seventy-five thousand, for a hundred thousand, and those are big numbers, they, they are. You know, I, I ate off that for a lot of years. What we're fixing to bring to you is engineering contracts for half a million and a million and a half and things. And it's gonna be huge numbers and your constituents are gonna ask questions about it. And we, I wanted, I wanted to educate you a little on how we can't bid engineering and what our process is for qualification submittals. But they're gonna be big numbers, to answer your question, they're gonna be big numbers. And I think that five will just get us through the soft cost part, is my best guess.
Well, and that was really the point that I was making, is that we need, we need to think about what we're, what is our plan?
Yes.
If we're going through that, we need to have a, a plan on the backend to actually construct it.
Correct, and that's really my, that's really my ask, yes sir, thank you.
I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, advisory committee. Basically because, well, the CNAC committee went a lot better than I thought it was. To begin with, I was saying, this is not going to work. Even halfway through, I thought, well, but the, what that committee brought to each other was e- e- exactly what was needed. Because the intelligence they had on that committee, uh, minus one person. But, uh, uh, the committee that I look at right now is to be sure that the citizens are aware of this. Because when it comes out that there's going to be a rate increase for what, ten years, probably the three point four percent over. And plus the eighty, somewhere three or four dollars. We gonna have to, um, prove to them that that's necessary.
Have to defend it, yes sir, you do, you do. And there are, and we couldn't go through this tonight, Mr. Bolden, but there are, once we get the rate study model built, and it's still in progress, and I'm in touch with them. There are a plethora of scenarios and, and some of you like tiered rates and some of you don't. But you could literally have rate classes that pay for all of this and rate classes that don't, it could be skewed. And so, I mean, there's options to model to find out. So you may have your zero to ten thousand gallon a month users have a lower impact at their rates than, than a, you know, a larger, say, commercial business does. That may or may not be a good thing, I'm just telling you, it doesn't have to be blanket. What I'm showing you here is just overall blanket increase in rate numbers.
At what point do people on fixed income just break? Like a water line, I mean, at what point do you just bankrupt them?
But I don't know, as I know the answer to that, Mr. Mall, I mean, you're right.
But it feels that way.
But it feels that way.
You know, I mean, you're talking about, I keep adding things up and it's like fifty percent rate hike, thirty-eight percent rate hike. There's a certain point that people can't handle that. And it seems like to me, you said you were coming in cold on a lot of this, right? Seems like to me, we should put this off until you can get a handle on it and come in hot, since you're the new city manager. It seems to me, it seems a little premature to be making these kind of decisions when people just passed a bond. And they thought it was Christmas, that everything was gonna be paid for and nothing is paid for. And I'm a little upset about it, but it just seems like if the people of Nagadoches had known this before the vote for that bond. I know that's old news, but I'm not sure they would have voted for any of this stuff.
Understand.
It's a surprise.
Understand. Part of what the rate study folks will bring to you and show you is where we are with rates, are we high, are we low? And I think you're gonna find we're very low on the list of rates, it's something we showed our CNAC group. And so, um, are we beyond where we're supposed to be? I, I don't have an answer, but we're gonna show you, I think, those comparative numbers.
So I know in my experience, every time extra revenue comes into my house, it gets spent.
Sure.
So it's not like we get extra revenue and it's gonna be parceled out for everybody.
Understand.
It's not the way it goes.
Understand, but this is, and this is what, this is what y'all do. So you evaluate our needs and you evaluate the way we, we fund it. And, and, and right now, what we're saying is, we have, if we're gonna fund any improvements, we're gonna have to have some form of revenue to pay for it. And that's really what I'm here to tell you.
Well, what is the downside of not starting in twenty twenty-six?
With any of this, okay. So, so we're gonna have, uh, additional failures, so right now, we're band-aiding, for lack of a better description, a bunch of old lines. And for me to put ten patches on an old cast iron line exceeds the cost of replacing the line. And whatever, I made the ten up, but I'm just saying, there, there's a point where the repairs far exceed the cost of putting a new line in. So economically, there's a long-term benefit to doing these repairs, uh, we'll have, we'll be able to control our costs better in the future. There's a, there's a environmental benefit, because these lines break and you know where the sewer goes every time. And so we've got a responsibility there and quite honestly, we've been fined before for that, I mean, by, by the state, so. So yeah, I think we have an obligation and I think there's a benefit to keeping our system whole and functioning. That doesn't even include the fact that if water lines are down, and you know, I did that this week, didn't we? Um, we had water lines out and we had water out and we had boil water notices as a result. And so that is gonna happen some, y'all, and I'm not saying this cures that, I'm saying it lowers the frequency of those kind of failures, so.
I'm on fixed income, but I also believe what's best for the city of Nagadoches. And right now, this is a start, at least start, and, and then, and whatever the engineering or whatever it takes, we need to get started.
Sure.
Kicking a can down the road is not gonna work.
Understood. Would you go back to that year-earliest, please?
Can, can we ask, uh, ask Mr. Beverlin to answer? Uh, Brad Mall brought up the point, do you feel comfortable right now dealing, you're brand new with this, as, you know, you've been here one week? Would you like to study this more, what, what is your thought, I'd like to hear from you about that? Don't mean to put you on the spot, trying to turn on the mic.
I think that the, uh, one, I think the rate study is very important. So just thirty thousand foot view, you're barely covering O and M. You're certainly not banking enough for replacement costs. So I have seen cities where literally they pass a bond because you were doing no banking of money for really replacement. For, you know, fifty-plus years, so that, that becomes an issue. If you put it off too long, and, and I hate to use the car analogy too, there's a point in there, if your repair costs start exceeding, let's say, monthly payment, including financing, to go buy a new one. At some point, you need to bite the bullet, I mean, if, as long as you can, again, get the financing to do it. I think that the, uh, in terms of the tiered rates, yes, I've been places where we've implemented those. And yes, it'll hit the higher users more and there's a lot of philosophical discussion on that. In some of those places, those are also ones we're trying to discourage high-water use. So there's different reasons to use tiered water rates. And it also has to still be justifiable based on the rate study. In terms of the timeline, I know Steve, you'd like to, uh, you'd like to look at moving forward. I think that, I think the first step really on that is scoping out what even an RFQ would look like for procuring those services and what they're for. I don't think that needs, the draft document doesn't need to be held up. Uh, I think laying out a timeline for the rate study is also reasonable for council. And also what the timeline would be to bring those items forward to, uh, the committee. I don't, I think there's things you can move forward on without necessarily pulling the trigger on, say, design services per se. That will give us a little bit more time and maybe also some financial modeling. Uh, I mean, it's hard for Steve to do the financial modeling in a vacuum without some of that rate study information. Because if you go too high, it's obvious that y'all haven't gone too high. You're not even at replace, you're not setting any thing aside to replace those, that infrastructure, you're barely at O and M. But if you go too high, then you can get a rate challenge. And that's where that rate study is critical, because that'd be a legal challenge. And so that's a different animal too, so it needs to be, it needs to recognize fully what your infrastructure, long-term needs are. What your O and M is for running your system and a reasonable amount of money for that debt service over time. And I, it all has to blend together, otherwise you also have legal.
And I, it all has to blend together. Otherwise, you also have legal exposure, you have financial exposure. Uh, and then you just have, you do have the issue of folks are gonna see a change in their water bill, bottom line, and they're gonna wanna know what it's going for. And I do think if they think it's going for something that otherwise is critical failure a couple of years from now, they're gonna wanna know that now and wanna know there's a plan to fix it. And I do think that that's why they also approved the bond. But in reality, you also have utility funds that you, you need to bring to the table as part of that equation. So, it needs to be understandable. I think that, Steve, we can package things, come back, and also look at a schedule for the committee and on the rate study. And I don't think there's any reason you can't start scoping out what an RFQ kinda looks like before it's even issued. And Mr. Beverlin, we've, we've, uh, done that, so they're ready to go.
Okay.
Engineering and surveying are at ninety-eight percent, but we've got the documents ready for RFQs. So, short of legal review, we can hold on that until we get direction. But we're actually at the point where we could very quickly begin a request for qualifications process at, and whenever we're instructed to do it.
Okay. And do you have a draft that after legal reviews that we could even get in front of council?
Yes, we, well, we, we have a draft now that's already our, actually, it's our approved standard, uh, request for qualifications that, uh, finance and council and legal have approved. And of course, they look at the individual document, y'all, when I do it. But yes, we, we do have, and it's our standard document for this process.
So, um, do you feel comfortable, Mr. Beverlin, um, with, um, us then making these decisions right now? Uh, I think, I think.
There's a chicken and egg issue here. So, your preliminary engineering can, and even at a high level, can give you order of magnitude cost pretty close. However, until you get to final design, you really don't know what it's gonna cost. And so, and then there's the other issue of if you wait too long to bid it, then that cost can then change again, and you have to update that package before you bid it.
So, are you suggesting we go forward with the design phase, or?
Uh, what I'm suggesting is, I think we, we come back to you and lay out the schedule of both what that design phase would be and the rate study schedule before we pull the trigger. So, y'all fully really see what the, the, and you don't have both of those aligned next to each other right now, do you?
No.
And I think we do need to show you that schedule first.
And maybe at the same, at the same time, um, um, we've given, uh, Mr. Baker here a draft of the resolution, and he could draft out, we, we don't, we haven't decided what a committee would do actually. So, drafting out the kinds of things, maybe talking with council in a little workshop about what a committee might do and.
Well, about looking at the rates, about looking at the projects, about looking at the financials. And I think in that same time, uh, Jerry can also, uh, do review the RFQ. I think we have enough front-end, uh, housekeeping, business things that we can prepare and bring back to you. So, y'all understand really almost from a, a cradle to grave in the decision process. But I don't believe that, and this is why Steve is bringing this now, something's gonna have to be done with those two sewer lines. I don't think it's a, I, I think you could just as easily pull the trigger, but I'd like y'all to feel comfortable about it in tandem with staff and with the rate study folks and everybody in doing it.
Sounds good to me.
And Steve's probably going, oh, you're adding another step. But I think, I think it'll be a help for, for the public, for just full disclosure on, on how this would proceed and really what it would entail. And I, I think that the rate study is also gonna drive home that you're barely covering your cost to operate.
Um, I, I have one other, um, did somebody else want to?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I have one other, um, issue that, um, um, has been raised actually by the Chamber of Commerce, and that's trying to get all the federal dollars, all the, and I know we had a discussion about this yesterday. Could you repeat?
Sure.
Tell us what you were looking at, because then I have a follow-up question to it.
You bet. So, we are, um, actively loo- looking for that and following. A lot of the, and I will say, a lot of the television billions of dollars for infrastructure is a little misleading to all of us. A lot of those are targeted towards specific areas and specific large-scale statewide-type projects, so please understand that. A lot of those dollars, if not all of them, are not all grant dollars. A lot of them are low-interest loans, so it's the same as you selling bonds. I'm not saying there isn't some money out there, but we are watching that carefully. So, we currently have grants consultants employed. Uh, we submitted grants for one of these projects, which I told Mr. Bolden today. We were awarded, uh, Rick and I went and Keith Friday, we got a community development block grant for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one of these water line projects, because we applied and competed, and we were successful. First time we've been successful since twenty twelve. So, uh, so we're looking out for those federal kind of ways to do it, even if it's one piece at a time. I've also submitted an application through the Texas Water Development Board for the Lenana-Benita Creek. It's just a preliminary. You know, get your finger in the water with them. And so, we are waiting, and it's a, can be a two-year process, folks. And so, understand, I'm also pursuing that. They do possibly have some loan forgiveness. So, they are, um, they, they can do fund it, think of it as a bond again, funded through a bond. But you can get like, depending on how your community qualifies, thirty percent loan forgiveness. There are higher costs with going through that, and that's a discussion for another day. But you do have some higher construction and engineering costs when you go through these water development board processes. May still be worthwhile, depending on the loan forgiveness. So, we're constantly looking for those. Both of those are on the table right now. And, and so, I don't think we're at all ignoring that option.
Well, my question is, is there something we can do, uh, I know, is it Grant Works we're contracting with?
It is.
Okay. And, um, I thanked Keith Payne yesterday when I saw him, because he started the.
He did start that, yes.
Yeah, right. And he did a good job. Um, um, is there something we can do in-house? Or would it be helpful to have somebody else? I know there are specific rural development kinds of grants and projects. If, if we need to invest a li- a little bit to get a lot, I, I mean, I know all of us would be very eager.
Sure.
To try to capture as many federal and state dollars, and also, I think to lobby, any of us would go and I'll bring cake to.
There you go.
My senators and my, you know, or whatever. But I think that, uh, uh, instead of just engineering, um, could, 'cause, you know, it's hard to spend an engineer's time on grant writing and grant reviewing. I'd just like you to think if there's any other way we can, um, add dollars to this or have some kind of plan to try and secure outside dollars, just.
Most, most communities our size and larger have some form of near-full-time help. It helps you, helps us seek grants, not just in the federal and state realm, and the private dollar realm too. Um, and staff, of course, is tuned to that. So, yeah, it does help, and you're right, engineering does not have full time to go chase these. So, when we find out information about it, and then the community, uh, Ms. Melinger's pretty good about calling each other and consulting. So, we, we do hear about things and we pursue them. We're not eligible for all of them. But sure, anything we could get help with additional folks that have their radar on for these is a big help, because we, we can, as the engineering group, we can't necessarily find them all.
So, really, what I'm thinking of is like the Office of Rural Health Programs. That's not where you would normally look for dollars for this, but you, we might be able to, if, if we had somebody looking.
Sure.
Very specifically, there might be some dollars that you could say, hey, we have a health issue over here and we need.
Right.
You know, and, and actually, that's what the, um, funds really that we just got.
We would, we would love to have help seeking that.
So, anyway, and I don't, I, I, I don't, if y'all would think about it, if we need to invest in hiring a part-time grant writer or doing, you know, but I, I don't know if it's worth it, but that's for you all to discuss.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna go back to my old deal. One percent of our sales tax goes to Nacogdoches Hospital District. That's about ten million dollars a year approximately. That would go a long way into solving some of these issues as far as money and rate increases are concerned. And I'm not through with that yet, so I'll warn you, it's coming. When's the last time we passed a bond in this town, like we just did? Does anybody know? Is anybody old enough to know?
For general obligation, I, long before, long before I know.
Yeah, I can't remember.
I think oh-four, oh-six were our last two, you know, utility or revenue type, style bonds. Uh, prior to that, for GOs, I don't, I don't know that I know the answer to that.
That was absolute, decades, decades. What happened, uh, last Tuesday night was unprecedented. The community spoke. Uh, there was a committee that was driven by a, a group of, of citizens in this town that got out, pushed, worked, got the people's response, and it was an overwhelming majority that they wanted their old stuff fixed. And to answer your question as far as the committee is concerned, I, 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 like Kathleen says, I want Jerry to look at that, that old resolution for CNET and then see what we have to do. If, if that thing is null and void, what we have to do to, to get people back involved in this process, because there are people in this town, we have a brand-new city manager. There are people in this town that are talented, that know finance, that know, 'cause my name's Jimmy, anything that you'll give me, I'll take. And, uh, e- especially for the citizens of this community, you know? So, that's kinda where I say, did we answer your questions?
Well, I think so. I think we're coming back to you.
Did, did we give you direction? Did we give you somewhat of a direction of what to do? We're not kicking, I don't want anybody in this audience to think that we're kicking this can down the road. This can has been kicked as far as it can. It's done. And it's gotten to a point, it sounds like, that, that you may go brush your teeth one night, and you got a mouthful of toothpaste, and you can't turn the water on. And I don't want it to get like that in the oldest town in Texas. You know, uh, sure, we are the oldest town in Texas, but, but, you know, and, and there's a, you have to be fiscally responsible. But, but we have ignored and patched and fixed all that we possibly can. And if, 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 if we delay this, it, I, I, I'm afraid that it's, it's gonna get into the quality of life in this town.
Understood.
You know, so, there, that's my saying, so.
So, I, I do wanna jump in, Mayor, if, if it's all right, and say that I went to the sink on Sunday morning to brush my teeth.
You had a mouthful of toothpaste.
I had a mouthful of toothpaste, and there was no water. Now, now granted, this was a new water line that burst, okay? So, those things happen. But to echo your point, it was, was not fun. And then when it came back on, it was boil water notice. If we don't start solving these problems now, we gotta pay for it. We gotta pay for it, period. If we don't solve it, we're gonna be in that situation all the time. In the time I've been on council, I recall two boil water notices in the city limits, and they were both in my ward. And they were both right in the same area. So, we're not kicking it anymore. We're fixing these problems. Bring us recommendations, but we're gonna solve it.
He never calls me either when that happens. I don't think that.
We, we only talked thirteen times in the last two days.
Well, I would like to add personally that I live in the line repair area. So, we've had, how many times have we repaired? So, anyway, we, you know, we do need, we need the, the sewer lines, you know. I'm, I'm terribly worried about our ecological damage and our damage to a lot of other things, but I wanna do it right. So, let's bring us what you think we need, and we'll be getting on it and doing all of it.
And I, and I do not anticipate it's gonna add a lot of time. I think what we're just gonna do is really organize the schedule, and then the documentation, and then, so y'all understand the steps, and then what the timeline will be, and also what the committee's charge will be. So, everything is lined up and it makes sense.
Will this be a workshop, and do we wanna set a date for it, or will this be, I mean?
Could that be done on the twenty-eighth, Rick, or is that, is that too early?
Before?
Let's see, what, before Steve leaves. That beard's gonna get longer, I think, um, really fast.
We possibly have two meeting, I mean, really, we're open to whatever it takes.
I mean, we have the contracts ninety-eight percent done, so a timeline's not a hard document.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Kind of what it looks like. And in addition to that, I don't think you really listed anything arduous, so.
No, I think it was, it's just a matter of the, the content. We, this is a lot of information to digest. Y'all just finished the bond. Now, we're talking about other, other steps, and then going to design. This is just so we can lay it out so we can move forward. So, it shouldn't take long.
Okay, so the question I have is, if we do go to a committee, do we want as part, here's the chicken egg kinda thing. Do we want, as you redo the, um, the, what is it, the?
Resolution.
Thank you, resolution. It had names on it. Do we, how do we wanna approach that, or do we, um, that's really what I'm trying to add.
What I've observed around here is from Thanksgiving through Christmas, ain't nobody around. And I think we ought to start after the first of the year.
Well, we could, we could get the committee in place anyway, you know, I don't care. I mean, if they're, uh, if they're on vacation, they're on vacation.
They don't have to meet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just laying out the schedule.
They can be ready to go.
Correct.
January one, you know, uh.
We had a pretty good process last year, and we appointed in December, and they got started in January.
If, if, whatever you suggest.
And, and again, that includes the, the, the timeline on the, on the rate study and the, and the solicitation, 'cause it's gonna take you a little while to go through RFQ process as well. Yep.
Did we give you direction?
You al- you always do, Mayor. Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody have anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much, Steve. Appreciate it very much. Okay. Last item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the bond election held on November seventh, two thousand twenty-three by the city of Nacogdoches.
Do you want a motion?
It's an, it's an approval of a resolution, yes, please.
I, I move to approve, uh, the ordinance, is that right? Okay, uh, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the bond election held on November seventh. I, it, um, okay, is that good enough?
I'll second it.
Motion second?
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna make one comment and, and thank, uh, the Capitol Needs Committee, City Council, and, and all those that worked so hard to get all of these proposals to the, to the voters, and then overwhelmingly passed. It's time for us to get to work and get all seven propositions, projects completed. Thank you.
All right, we got a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much for attending this special meeting. Uh, this meeting is adjourned. God bless the great city of Nacogdoches.